Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississauga of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the City of Toronto Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, or phone. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions out or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals of the hearing today. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Mr. Secretary-Treasurer, we believe we have some minutes to confirm from a previous meeting?
We do, Madam Chair. It's the minutes of our August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. President was Ms. Casson, Mr. Kubo, Mr. Nipfeld, Ms. Martin, and Mr. Fazelli.
Thank you. Do we have someone who would like to move a motion? Mr. Nipfeld?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that we approve the minutes.
And a secondary? Ms. Martin, thank you. All in favor of approving the minutes? Oh, we have four in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to ask if anyone has any conflicts with this morning's agenda? No? I don't believe so. Thank you very much. Do we have any deferrals for this morning's meeting?
Madam Chair, we don't have any deferrals in the AM time period.
All right. Thank you. And no files to close?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. So I guess we can get started with the first item. Sixty-six Burndale Avenue, this is an application consent to sever one fifteen-meter lot into two seven-point-six-two-meter lots. We have variances, associated variance applications for west side yard setback to rear deck, height of side exterior main walls, lot area, lot frontage, platform encroachment into front yard and west side yard, roof eaves projection, east side side yard setback and west side yard setback. On file, we have a draft art plan, a cover letter, development engineering review memo, urban forestry memo, plans, tree plan, photos, six letters of opposition, and a petition in opposition containing seventeen signatures, and a late community planning report. We have our applicant with us today. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, committee panel. My name is Mehdi Ajwad. I'm here as the architect and on behalf of my client, the owner of sixty-six Burndale, here to present this case, this three-application.
Thank you. And your address?
Thirty-four Twenty-Nine Young Street, Toronto, Ontario.
All right. We do have a number of people who wish to speak on this, so if you could provide us with a brief presentation?
Sure, definitely. Actually, I tried to use my time in the best way, so I tried to be as fast as possible. So this application was submitted in late spring twenty-twenty-five, and after submission, we had diligently working with Engineering Department, Urban Forestry, and Planning to address any potential concern, and due to some improvement that we proposed, Urban Forestry and Engineering Department doesn't have any concern anymore as per the improvement regarding the planning situation. We started communication with the planning department from July eleventh, and we had several email and communication and phone call to find any potential concern. There are some concerns then raised during this communication, mostly regarding our variances. We eliminated one variance regarding the first floor height, which already reflected on the public notice, and justified the rest. During this time till October sixth at two PM, we never heard any concern regarding the consent, although we provided all the information, which is part of our supportive document. We never heard such a concern from the planning, and two days ago, at two PM, we were informed that planning changed their position and decided to not support the consent. I understand that there may be some non-planning concern about replicability of support of these consents, but I believe that we are here to talk about each case, unique case based on unique situation, unique lot, and unique time and replicability of any application. It shouldn't be a concern, because any single consent application should come here in front of committee and get approved, and it's not the easy way to just refer to some other approval for this one. And I will try to present our reasoning and then go through the planning report as well. If I can have the first page of our presentation document on the screen. Okay, so our property at sixty-six Burndale, located just two property away from the B-Craft Street, which is the western boundary of North York Secondary Plan. Committee panel may know better than me that this North York Secondary Plan is trying to encourage densification and height, GFA, and also FSI along the Young Street corridor, and we are just two blocks away from this secondary plan. And the main consideration that we have is how we can propose the best transition from this densified area to the neighborhood purely occupied with single-family dwelling and houses. And I believe that proposing consent for having two detached houses, two detached buildings, is the most smart way to propose such a transition, because we are keeping the building form as it is. We are proposing two detached buildings, two detached houses. I know that we proposed duplexes. I will go through that one. We are keeping the building form as it is, and we emphasize on the building form importance rather than the size. I believe that we can see that how awkward would be to have a three-story, four-story rental apartment building as of right with the fifty-foot size in the neighborhood which are purely occupied with the houses. That's why we believe that considering the North York Secondary Plan, that's a smart way to provide transition from west side to the east side to the neighborhood, if we can go to the... Yeah, that's the page. And regarding the context of neighborhood, if you look at the plan on the screen, we mark up the property, subjected property with the red triangle, and we have like a blue triangle for the immediate neighborhood with the same block, and we have like a green, bigger one that you can see. In terms of required area for the property, if you did this property zone as already, required area is five hundred fifty square meter, and for the frontage is fifteen meter, fifty footer actually. So as you can see, all marked, our C-on marked property that you can see on the neighborhood, they are not in compliance with the requirement zoning by law area. I can say mostly so close to all of properties, except just a couple of exceptions. Or if we can go to the next page, please? Sorry, the page before this one regarding the frontage. Okay, so this plan shows the properties that are not in compliance with the lot frontage. Interestingly, all those pink area are not in compliance, and we do have three property in the same street, less than a block away from our property with the same frontage and area, or slightly less. And we do have so many sample slightly more than what we are proposing in the same block. So, and the other fact that I communicate with our planner, some of these non-compliance lot, even some of those that has the same frontage and same area, they are original lots. So we are not talking about some property that severed a couple of years ago. We are talking about the historical character and historical concept of neighborhood. It was, those properties were there from day first that we had this subdivision approved. So it's not even about the recent situation, it is a historical character of this neighborhood. And if we go to the next page, please?
You need to wrap it up?
Sure, sure. I do my business. These are some sample, these seven property that you can see in the neighborhood, three of them are on the same street, three of them is just one street, two street away from us, but they are all referred in the planning department review as well. These are our same size, same area, but the point I want to go through that for the planning staff report that we received. The process for us is we are talking about the same fact. All this information that I provided are the same fact that planning department referred to that. So we have seen these facts and then engaged, to be engaged to propose a severance and consent for this application. But on planning side, I believe that they made a decision, and then they tried to just find some way to play with the number for justification of this decision, and I just want to give you some example. For example, for lot study area, lot area and lot frontage study that they provided, they considered the green marked area for the neighborhood, okay? And they gave us, you know, some number that just one-point-seven percent of lot is incomparable size. But what if we limit the analyzed area and evaluated area to the block or less than five hundred square meter, then the number significantly will be different, because in that case, we will have six percent of lot slightly less than ours or at the same size, or we have thirty-five percent of lots slightly bigger than what we are proposing, still in non-compliance situation. Or if we limit ourselves to the same block, same street, we do have fifty percent of lot in non-compliance situation. That's why I believe that the number that referred in the staff report is a bit misleading about the fact. There is, you know, there is same fact that we have to interpretation, but the reality is a bit different. I just want to tell just a couple of sentence. I don't see my time. Oh, I was almost done. So just a couple of sentence on the last page of my presentation.
You're actually over time. Yeah.
Oh. Can't I finish this one? Just two sentences on the last page.
Two sentences.
Yeah, sure. And on the last page of my presentation, we are talking about the actual fact. If you look at this one, the photo that you see on the bottom side of presentation is the existing condition. And what we are proposing, if you can see, most of the front yard is occupied with hard landscaping. What we are proposing, those blue marked area, we are proposing them as a soft landscaping. We are increasing soft landscaping, and we are stepping back from the existing house. You see the existing house is in a purple mark, and what we are proposing, we are stepping back, which I want to say, what we are proposing, it's good fit for the neighborhood in terms of building and also for the consent. I had all this argument and reasoning for that. I would be more than happy to answer in person.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? All right. Let's go. I think you've addressed your comments on the planning report, community planning report. So let's go to the neighbors first. Do we have... Are they all virtual? I'm just checking. Is anyone here on this item? No? Okay, so we'll go online. Excuse me.
Bonnie McAlpine has been unmuted, Chair.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Could we start with your name and address first, please?
Bonnie McAlpine, sixty-one Burndale.
Thank you. And please go ahead with your comments.
The severance of the whole lot, I could be wrong, because I was trying to listen very closely to what he was saying. I don't think there would be a lot that small if it was, if the lot was divided on this block. And the side variances, it would be, it would be too narrow for the neighbors. I mean, if it's so narrow that a person couldn't even walk between the houses, it would block the light from sixty-four Burndale. And I would say build one house, not two. There isn't any other duplexes on this block, or this street, or on the east side of Young that I'm aware of.
Is that your comments?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And I am opposed.
All right. We gathered that, but thank you. All right, let's have the next neighbor, please.
Yeah? Yes, I can. All right. Would the person controlling the screen be able to scroll up to my letter? I think it's the first one.
And could you please start with your name and address?
Yes, my name is Christopher Yea. I live at eighty Inverloki Boulevard in Markham, but I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Jean Ng, who lives at seventy Burndale Avenue, which is the neighboring property to the west of the subject site.
Okay.
I wanted to speak to our concerns and some of the concerns of the seventeen neighbors who signed the letter of objection to the proposed severance and the associated variance requests. We feel that the proposal disregards the fundamental provisions of the zoning bylaws and the official plan, among other things, but I'll focus on those two items within the five minutes. Starting with the zoning bylaws, and going kind of in order of the letter I wrote, one of our biggest concerns is the applicant is proposing to take existing conforming lot and severing it into two severely nonconforming lots, in which they're proposing to reduce the lot area and the lot frontage by fifty percent, which in our opinion, isn't really a minor change. From here, I just wanted to jump to the official plan policy four-point-one-point-five, which outlines that the development, outlines the development criteria for established neighborhoods. The development is, in established neighborhoods, will respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the area with regard to size, configuration of lots, heights, massing scale, and dwelling type of the nearby residential properties. The plan affirms that no changes will be made with respect to rezoning, minor variance, consent, or other public action that are not in keeping with the physical character of the neighborhood. With that, I would argue that the application does not attempt to do any of this, and if we go a bit deeper and look at the design as a result of the requested lot severance, we can see it triggers several minor variance requests and further speaks to the incompatibility of the proposed design with the neighborhood. One of the biggest requests is to reduce the side yard setbacks from one-point-eight meters to as little as zero-point-four-six meters, which is a seventy-five percent reduction in the side yard setback between the two duplexes. Obviously, there's maintenance issues that can arise from this, but there's also potential life safety issues. You know, fire can jump the, jump a much smaller gap, and I'm not sure what material they're proposing on the side, but if they're using a material like Eiffest, which a lot of builders like to use on the sides, that's a flammable material, so that kind of further exacerbates this issue. On the other side of the duplexes, they're proposing a one-meter side yard setback between seventy Burndale and sixty-four Burndale. And if you look at the plan, they're also proposing a bay window on the side yard setback, on the sides of the duplexes, which then allow them to further encroach beyond the setback zero-point-six meters or within zero-point-six meters of the property line. So now you have two unprotected openings that are only zero-point-six meters away from the neighboring property lines, which again, could be something to take into consider when reducing the side yard setbacks. And then the other thing, I wasn't, I didn't see a variance request for this, but it appears that they're requesting a thirty-eight percent lot coverage, which exceeds the thirty percent lot coverage outlined in the bylaws. And this is also aligned with planning staff's previous refusals of other proposals of lot coverages above thirty-five percent. Also, I noted, but I don't have like specifics, but the front yard setback looks to be a little bit more shallow than what's required. Seventy Burndale has an eight-point-five-meter setback, and sixty-four Burndale seems to have around a seven-meter setback, so you need to average those two. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on some other applications that were denied in the neighborhood. Eighty-six Harlandale, which I believe was also hyphen studio, proposed almost the exact same thing, reducing the lot frontage and coverage by fifty percent. This was refused at the committee level and upon appeal. Similarly, one-seventy-one Burndale, again, the proposal requested to sever the lot into two seven-point-six-meter-wide lots, and this was refused as well. And in that, there was a study by city staff of the three-hundred-ninety lots, which, in which only seventy, in which seventy percent of the lot frontages were between fifteen to eighteen-point-three meters in the neighborhood, while only two percent were similar to what's being proposed. I see my time's up, so I'll stop there, and I just would like to request that the committee refuse the proposed severance and the associated variances. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I believe we have one more speaker?
Madam Chair, staff have tried to reach out to the resident of sixty-three Burndale, and were unsuccessful.
All right. All right. Well, we will go take it back to the applicant and let him address just the comments that have been made by the residents?
Sure, definitely. I tried to address all of them, but I'm looking at my time as well. You know, I go in order that I receive those concern. Regarding the sixty-one, actually, the neighbor at sixty-one Burndale, that's exactly the fact I tried to mention. Sixty-one Burndale have a frontage of thirty foot by hundred-seventeen feet depth. What we are proposing is twenty-five, you know, the difference is slight, you know, it is so close to each other. So none of these properties are in compliance with the zoning bylaw, and that's what we are trying to emphasize on that, you know? I recently, I, there is just a side note for the committee panel or the process for that. We recently see so many activity like trying to outnumber the opposition letter, because I received a petition, I review all the letter carefully, but unfortunately, I saw so many duplication in signature of that. You know, we saw seventeen persons signing the petition, but they are duplicating, you know, two persons signed for just one property, or they submitted a letter and then decide a petition. Anyway, I review all these comments, and interestingly, through the thirteen property that opposed to us, five of those property had almost same frontage, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five, which is not in compliance with the required fifty-footer property. Regarding the duplex form, I said, you know, I presented in my first presentation, if you look at the floor plan, the type of, the title of duplex may be confusing for our neighbor. If you look at the plan, we are, what we are proposing is common in a neighborhood. I used to live in a neighborhood for a couple of years, and if you can see, we have just a basement, rental basement. The rest of the house is just a regular house, and having a rental basement is very common in this neighborhood. What we try to do is just legalize the situation, instead of having some illegal activity in a basement for renting out the basement, we are just legalize that one and have all the consideration for the safety, fire, and the separation. Basically, having a rental basement is common in a neighborhood, and that's why we are proposing duplex, not triplex, not fourplex. Regarding the comment provided by our neighbor at seventeen, I just, it is a very technical matter, but I just, since we are on record, I believe that SASP eight-two-six overruled the policy, official plan policy of four-point-one-point-five, which is referred in a staff report as well, but this policy is talking about multiplexes, and you know, they do have a different requirement. It is common to be confused between these two requirement. And again, since we are in record, we never saw any application for one-seventy-one Burndale that our neighbor mentioned, that I couldn't find any application for that, not application, not the refusal for that. As they refer for some refusal, we do have some approval as well. For example, eighty-one Burnett was approved in, I'm not sure, in committee or T-Lab, but it was approved, and we do have so many approves out of this neighborhood. Basically, we have one refusal for two, one-five Elmhurst, which was in twenty-eighteen, and one approval in Burnett. The eighty-six Harlandale that they mentioned, we were the applicant for that one, and that was totally different case, because it was in a corner lot, and this requirement was a bit different. That's why I emphasized that each property should be reviewed uniquely and independently, not referring to others. Regarding the lot coverage front setback, we are not asking for any variances for that, and for the side setback, which they mentioned, again, if you look at our side plan, what we are proposing is three feet six inches from outer side of these two unit, and for the between these two proposed unit, we are proposing forty-six, which will be combined, since they are built together and maintained together, they will be combined and proposed, and give us enough width, combine of two property for the maintenance, and these numbers, again, are very similar in the neighborhood. We do have even smaller than that. If we look at the presentation document, page five, I guess, yeah, this one. If you look at those blue number, and I mark them on the map as well, those numbers are smaller than us or same as us, and these setbacks, even you know, our property at the front, I'm not sure if it's sixty-one or fifty-nine, they do have same setback that what we are proposing. Regarding the front setback, those things, we did the zoning review, we are not asking for any variance for that. Yeah, that's it. I guess I have thirty seconds more.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have a question for the applicant? No? All right. Thank you very much. So we're ready to take this into committee? Thank you. Can we pull up the planning staff report, please? Because it was late, right? I don't have it in my package. I have to go into another document. I don't have it in my package, I have to go into another document. Does anyone want to start? I mean, I think, Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, first of all, the presentation, um, particularly by Mr. Yap at sixty was extremely well-prepared, comprehensive, I'd like to thank him for that. Um, I think there's some confusion in the presentation material that you provided on consent, because you were not comparing, in certain points that you weren't comparing, as far as I could see, what you were requesting, um, as, as much as whether or not the by, the bylaw, um, had, or the consent had been given, that provided a smaller frontage, but you, you didn't actually, as far as I could see, have many examples where the frontage was what you're proposing specifically or less. Um, and that seems to be a point that the planning department has, um, has dwelled on to some extent in their report. I, I don't have difficulty as the, as applicant suggested he does with the analysis in the planning report. I think it's clear, I think it, it's convincing. Um, and basically, the final point that they make is that, um, the application, if approved, would become the smallest, would provide for the smallest lot frontages in areas found within the immediate context as defined by the official plan. Um, and, and staffer of the opinion that with these dimensions and, and setbacks and so forth, um, this particular proposal, this consent would not comply um, to the official plan or section fifty-one twenty-four of the Planning Act. That's pretty clear. Um, I see nothing in their analysis to question that conclusion, uh, and I'm prepared to accept it. On that basis, I'm unable to support the consent on this application.
I'm sorry, we're in committee now? Um, I agree with my colleague on his, um, analysis of it, and further to that, I would say that the zoning bylaw, I just can't reconcile a fifty percent reduction in the lot frontage as being minor. Um, half the lot frontage, and it's very common in the city in older areas to have lots that don't meet the zoning provisions, because the zoning bylaw, or the houses predated the zoning bylaws, very common. And I think if staff were to come out with a policy report that said in areas close to intensification areas, possibly, we should look at these types of severances, but that hasn't been done, so, given that, um, I am in support of the staff report as well. So, any other comments? Mr. Swartz?
Yeah, I agree with my, um, co-panelists, I believe. Can you, can you hear me? Okay, so I agree with the previous two speakers on the panel. So I just look at the four tests, and, and question is, do I disagree with planning staff uh, on their characterization of this application? So just looking at the four tests, right, the, uh, the official plan, uh, this is much smaller than the prevailing, uh, lot sizes. The zoning, um, planning staff pointed out that there is, uh, the intent of the zoning was to maintain a certain standard in the neighborhood, this doesn't, um, doesn't fit the, uh, existing built forms, so it's not, uh, desirable, although increasing the number of, uh, units in the neighborhood might be, but the way this is done is not consistent. So it's not desirable, and it, it, taken as a whole, the frontage, the area, it's substantial, it's not minor, so I don't see how we could approve this, but, um, I, I, I guess we've got three panelists already who've spoken against it. For those reasons, I think the applicant needs to come up with something better and more consistent.
Sorry.
And not to talk while we're talking, and sit down, please.
All right, um, let's move on. Uh, any other comments from panel? All right, would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I move that the application for consent invariances, um, be refused.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second or? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been refused. Applications and the minor variances, yes. All right, item number two, twenty-six Glenboro Park Crescent. This is another consent to sever. This is a nineteen point zero five meter lot into two lots, one nine point five two meter frontage and one nine point five three meter frontage. We have rented, sorry, variances for lot area, lot frontage, coverage, height of side main walls, side yard setbacks, and height of a building. On file, we have a survey, draft plan, plans, cover letter, development engineering and transportation services memo, urban forestry memo, uh, TRCA comments, heritage memo, and a late community planning report. Do we have our applicants? All right. Hello? It's like a Mr. Zarian or Ms. Zarian? Are you there?
Me?
Hello?
Hello, hi.
Good morning.
Good morning, dear chair and committee members. I'm sorry for the, uh, communication difficulty. Thanks for having us today. Uh, should I start my explanation?
First, could we start with your name and address, please?
Of course, of course. My name is Hassan Zareyan. The address is four four eight EZ S Street, Richmond Hill, Ontario.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, nothing, no changes.
All right, uh, we do have neighbors, uh, I believe in, in attendance in the chamber and also online, so could you provide us a brief presentation of the application?
Absolutely. Yes, we are proposing, uh, to split the existing sixty-six foot lot into thirty-three foot lots to build two detached homes. The owners are a family who intend to build and live together on this divided property. We have worked closely with the urban forestry department and addressed their comments by ensuring the retention of two healthy trees on the proposed part two, uh, lot. The drawings were revised accordingly to preserve those trees. In addition, all comments from engineering and transportation have been fully addressed. We have maintained ongoing communication with the staff members, including the senior planner, to ensure a smooth coordination. In regards to the staff report, we understand that the proposed frontages are narrower than some nearby lots, but this represents a gentle compatible form of change, which is aligned with the city's direction towards more diverse and attainable housing. Toronto is currently facing a significant housing and affordability, affordability challenge along with the rising construction cost and market pressure. So building a single large home here is not a practical action anymore. By dividing the lot, the family can create two meaningful and affordable homes that allow them to stay closer, use the land more efficiently, and provide housing options that are attainable even for the future. This approach also aligns with the city's housing TO plan or strategy, which encourages gentle density intensification and a broader range of housing choices within the established neighborhoods. While staff did not recommend refusal or approval in their report, and with full respect to the staff report, we believe this proposal goes beyond a lot size comparison, actually. Even though the proposed lots are narrower, the homes which are about twenty-two, the proposed homes which are about twenty-two hundred square feet are still larger than nearly half of the existing one-story homes in the neighborhood. From a built form perspective, they still fit comfortably within the area and the character of the surrounding properties. Uh, the design has been carefully considered to maintain a consistent style, appropriate scale, and attention to the street escape character, so that the homes fit naturally and respectfully within the neighborhood. We believe this proposal is a thoughtful example of gentle, gentle density intensification, which addresses real housing needs while maintaining the character and sense of community in this area. And at the end, for dimension reasons, we respectfully ask the committee to approve the consent application, so that two attainable, well-designed family homes can be built in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for staying on time. Um, any questions of the applicant? No? All right. Uh, let's go to anyone in the audience here today. Hi, welcome, please come forward and make sure the microphone is on, there's a switch. And then if you could start with your name and address, please.
Good morning, committee. My name is Sonia Wong. I'm the owner of thirty-five Glenboro Park Crescent. The owner of forty-two Glenboro Park Crescent, he is in hospital. He asked me to act on his behalf. So both of us object to the proposed severance of twenty-six Glenboro Park Crescent. The property at twenty-six Glenboro Park Crescent has a total area of over seven thousand square feet, which is considerably smaller than the typical lots in the neighborhood. My property at thirty-five Glenboro Park Crescent is approximately twelve thousand square feet. Like most of the nearby homes, is designed and built as a single detached residence. The proposed severance is inconsistent with the existing character and established pattern of our neighborhood. Recent developments have all been single detached homes built on larger lots, maintaining the aesthetic scale and integrity of the area. Allowing this severance would set an undesirable precedence, leading to smaller lots and higher density that do not align with the intent of the current zoning of the neighborhood character. In addition, I'm concerned that creating two undersized lots will negatively impact property values and diminish the overall appeal of our community. The existing pattern of larger single-family homes contributes to the distinct and desirable nature of Glenboro Park Crescent. And this proposed severance would undermine that consistency. For these reasons, I respectfully request that a committee judgment denied application for lost severance at twenty-six Glenboro Park Crescent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for the resident? No? All right, thank you very much. And anyone else in the audience on this item? Nope, so online? All right. Mr. Gudarian? Are you there?
Hi, this is Elham Gudarian.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Could you start with your name and address, please?
Yes, uh, Elham Gudarian, and I am the owner of twenty-five Glenboro Park Crescent.
Thank you. All right, you can go ahead and give us your comments.
Okay, uh, first of all, thank you very much for your time, uh, the committee members. And, um, um, I, um, I have objection to the severance of the property located at twenty-six Park Crescent. The severance of the said property, I believe, is not aligned with the character of this neighborhood. However, I know the committee is not hundred percent satisfied as well due to the lot frontage and overall area of each and every proposed severed lot. I believe just it has a negative impact on the surrounding, and the increased density is not compatible with the neighborhood character and the bulwark parking and, uh, this, uh, small community, and that's the only reason that I can object to the severance of this two lot.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we have one more neighbor? All right.
Um, so I'm Jeffrey, I'm actually the brother-in-law of the owner, Yana Chan of twenty-eight Glenboro, Glenboro Park Crescent, which is an adjacent unit.
All right, and you're speaking on behalf of?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Uh, we would like to, uh, strongly object, um, this proposal, and below are our points. So firstly, um, it is really incompatible with the existing neighborhood character. Um, what's proposed right now is splitting a land into two smaller lots, um, which is highly increasing density of, of the area, right? All the existing houses are much larger properties, and having such a small unit, um, there's going to be much more driveways, and it's going to be much more congested. And even like a normal detached home usually starts at forty feet, something that's thirty-three will have like very rare narrow gap between property, properties, which is unsafe. And secondly, you know, it's going to have a very negative impact to the surrounding property values. Um, as you know, in the recent few years, um, property prices haven't been that great, right? Obviously, the market has been tough for everyone, interest rate already very high. Um, a lot of homeowners in the area have went through a lot, and their finances are very, already very tight with such, um, decreases in equity already. You know, having another hit to the community could be, would provide additional stress for all family members, and could be the nail in the coffin for some. Uh, as you know, the average property value depends on all the properties in the street, right? So having something that doesn't match, um, the existing, that doesn't comply with what's existing is going to be impactful to the prices for sure. Um, there's going to be a lot of increased traffic, um, parking, there'll be a lot of additional stress on the drainage, like store management and power lines, right? Because you're doubling the amount of people who are going to be living here, as a concern for everyone. And more importantly, even during the construction, right? There'll be a lot of noise, a lot of dust, a lot of disruptions for everyone in the neighborhood, right? Even if there's emergency vehicles, it could be blocked by the construction. You know, for my sister-in-law's family, right? Um, they have young children who are not going to be able to play on the streets because of the construction vehicles passing by, as it's going to be a huge hazard. You know, they've already had to stay at home for a long time due to COVID. Now with all the additional dirt, dust pollution from the construction, they're going to be forced to stay at home even longer, right? Because like for the foreseeable, like one to two years of construction, they can't really go outside safely, right? And we're worried that they're not going to be able to grow up healthy if, you know, they can exit the home safely. Um, in terms of the, this precedent, we also want to say that in this street, I don't think, as far as I'm aware, that there are any severances of such type. And it could be, it could really impact the neighborhood in the future if we're encouraging loss weight on a neighborhood that's normally, does not support such kind of action, right? Um, we don't think it's, it's consistent with what should be considered with the current bylaw, at least in our area. And, you know, if the improvement was like school, hospital, park, anything that makes the community better, we can completely understand. But, you know, this construction is going to cause severe harm to our family, and honestly, it, in our opinion, it downgrades the community. So we're taking, we're going to suffer a lot from having a loss, right? And I know the proposal mentioned that, um, they're saying that they're trying to make the housing affordable, but to be honest, having a, a five thousand dollar a month, two five thousand dollar a month rentals is realistically not affordable. I think they're just using this as, as an excuse to take advantage of larger units to make profit off of the street. Yeah, that's, uh, that's our, so then obviously, based on that, we wish to reject, oppose the, um.
All right, thank you. Does any of any, anyone have questions for this resident? No? All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else, staff? All right, thank you very much. Okay, let's have, uh, the applicant back on to address the concerns that have been raised by the residents.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so on behalf of the owners, I totally respect the neighbor's concern. That's totally understandable. But regarding some of the comments or concerns, even if we don't come to committee and ask for any for any variances or consent, they can build the house over there. And it causes some unavoidable, unfortunate situation like traffic or construction, blockage, or dirt and dust and all those concerns that the neighbors mentioned. But again, on behalf of the owners, they are smart professionals. They cannot even afford, in this housing crisis, they cannot afford to build a larger house anymore. So we believe this is a very thoughtful change, thoughtful proposal. And I'd like to have respected neighbors' attention. There are so many new policies coming along, supporting diversification of housing choices, supporting intensification of density, all those things. And there might be a rental building in this property if we don't build these nice new detached homes. There might be a rental property after two years with so many suites in it. So in our opinion, this is a very appropriate proposal. And again, with all due respect to the neighbor's concerns.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. We'll take this into committee. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Similar to the last application, the planning department undertook a lot analysis for this area, and I believe the applicant agrees with the conclusion, or at least with the information from the lot analysis, that the rea- Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. The results of the, of the lot study demonstrate that there are no existing lots within the immediate context with frontages of less than 10 meters. The applicant basically indicated that, given the need for housing, perhaps we should consider properties that are less than 10 meters. But the official plan is, speaks to this issue, and the, the planning department has quite readily indicated that, given the consistency in the existing lot frontages and the lot areas, because there is a great consistency, the application would become the smallest, would have the smallest lot frontages and areas found within the immediate context. And as such, it doesn't meet the intent and purpose of the official plan, and it fails the consent conditions for identified in section 5124 of the Planning Act. I think that that is a reasonable conclusion based on, on good evidence, and I don't have any, any difficulty in accepting the planning department's recommendation in this case. That being the case, I'm not able to support the consent in this application.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Swartz?
Just want to go through the four tasks here a bit.
Can you make sure you're speaking into the mic? Thank you.
Sorry. Okay. Let me take a look at this concerning the four tasks, which is what we're tasked to do. So official plan. We had the staff report. The staff report pointed out that the lot frontages would be the smallest, and they don't comply with the intent of policy 4.1.5. So my view, the staff are right. It doesn't meet the test for the official plan. Terms of zoning, staff noted the side yard setbacks and felt that it undermined the intent of the zoning bylaw. I agree with the staff on that. Let's deal with the desirability. Terms of the massing, staff pointed out that there was inappropriate massing. I tend to agree. Now, I note the applicant has talked about increasing housing in the neighborhood. That would be desirable, but not at the expense of the inappropriate massing proposed here. And then overall, staff concluded that the reductions here are substantial and not minor. So I, I can't see that this application meets any of the four tasks, and so I would refuse it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? No? All right, let's, someone like to make a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that the consent application and the variance applications be refused.
And do we have a seconder? Mr. Swartz? All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been refused. All right, we are on to item three. 57 Sultana Avenue. This is an application to legalize and maintain a habitable space in the converted Integro Garage. The variance is for parking space location in a front yard. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, and transportation services report. Do we have our applicant? Online? Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. My name is Dominika Kowiaza-Sitko. I'm living at 44 Glatsmore Crescent in Atobicoke, M9W 3Y9. I'm applicant for this application.
Thank you. Any changes to make to the application?
Not really. The only small change will be to address the transportation comment, but it's a, it's a technical detail.
Okay. We do have a neighbor, I believe, that wishes to speak to it. So could you give us a very brief presentation of what, what you're applying for?
Absolutely. So the owners, present owners, when they purchased the house, they decided to enclose the existing garage and convert it into additional living space. The garage was very small, so it didn't fit the purpose of using it as a garage, actually. It was a storage space, but because the family is quite large, they decided to convert the space for living. Unfortunately, the permi, the conversion was done without the permit application, and because the inspector noticed that some action was happening there, put stopper order, and I was asked to legalize this, this process. Unfortunately, it triggers the variance with the parking space, and this is why the application had to be presented in front of the committee.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? No? All right, let's move on to the neighbor. There's no one in the audience on this item? Nope. All right, let's go to our virtual neighbor. They're not online? All right. Okay. Actually, while we're waiting for you to try to find them, maybe the applicant, could you address the transportation services report? You said there was a technicality. Maybe you could just address it? Do we have her back? Okay. Sorry, I guess that's, sorry, I'm making you do gymnastics.
Is it okay? Sorry, I just, I didn't time myself.
Yes, okay.
So transportation doesn't have any objections against this application because the parking is allowed in front of the front yard of the house. The only technicality is that on the survey, on the site plan, I showed 5.4 by 2.6 space, and it's really needed 5.6, which is not a problem because we have a space of 6.14 meters in front legally.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
All right, let's just see if we can get the neighbor. And we don't have a letter from anyone, do we, on this one? No, there were no letters in the package. No?
Madam Chair, we tried reaching out to Daniel with the phone number provided, and we are not getting an answer.
All right, thanks for trying. Okay, let's, are we ready to take this into committee?
Sure.
All right.
I'd just like to comment that I think this is a fairly straightforward application. It's using existing part of the house that's already existing, so there's no changes to the actual house. And when they can resolve the parking to increase the length to 5.6 meters, I don't see a problem with supporting this application.
Thank you, and I will note that the space they're requesting is in an existing driveway. So, and it looks like other neighbors use the driveway for parking as well, so. All right, any other comments? No? All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this application.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martin and Ms. Sankar. Second slap motion. All in favor? Oh. Oh, yes.
Yes, on condition, on resolving the conditions that is outlined in the transportation report.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Sankar seconds that? She's fine with that? Thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We are back, and we are on item four, 483 St. Clements Avenue. This is an application for a new two-story dwelling with front porch, rear deck, and a basement walkout. We have variances for main wall height and west side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, presentation material, forestry memo, one letter of opposition from 485 St. Clements. Do we have our applicant?
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. This is Adi Shokiri, architect, 326 Shepherd Avenue East.
Thank you.
And I wish to ask for a deferral.
Oh, all right. And the reason for the deferral?
Yeah, earlier this morning, I was contacted by my client. They informed me that there's apparently some changes in their family status, and they are asking for some revisions and changes that is... might impact the variances, such we wish to ask for a deferral. Sign and die if possible.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, the applicant? No, all right. Let's take it into committee. Oh, wait, we have... Yeah, we don't have anybody... No, all right. Oh, sorry. Ms. Sankar, I'm sorry. I was scanning the...
No questions, Madam Chair. It's just to make a motion if no one else has anything.
All right, go ahead.
I'll motion to approve the deferral request. Sign and die to give the applicant an opportunity to address the incoming changes that he wishes to make.
All right, thank you. And a seconder? Ms... Mr. Nipfel? All in favor of the deferral request? That is unanimous. Your request has been granted for the deferral.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome. All right, item five, 51 Lee Croft Crescent. To construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage, variance... One variance for coverage. On file, we have a survey, plans, site photos, forestry memo, and a late letter of support from 49 Lee Croft Crescent. Do we have our applicant?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Purger, and I am at 768 Mary Street North, and I am from the design firm and will be the acting agent for the owners at 51 Lee Croft.
All right, thank you very much. I don't see anyone in the audience on this item? No? I don't see any neighbors involved, so does the committee wish a presentation? No? All right, I don't think we need a presentation unless there's something that you wanted to point out to us?
I think that's okay. It's pretty straightforward, I believe.
All right. Okay, let's take it into committee.
Do you have a question first?
Sure, sorry, Mr. Nipfel, question?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Have you seen the report from forestry to the applicant, sorry?
Yes, I have.
Okay, the second paragraph under comments indicates that they are suggesting that you modify the proposal to allow the preservation of a particular tree, and the options to preserve the tree include reducing the width of the dwelling, and so on and so forth. Can I ask you to comment on what you might be doing to accommodate that particular request?
Yes, so I had talked to David Bastock from Urban Forestry, so I know the canopy, that elm tree he would like to see. But in talking with him and having our neighbor in support of removing that tree, because the branches are overhanging their roof, as well as our present home before the rental, or the new build, so that tree has caused problems, being right in the middle of the two houses. So with the Arborist Report, if need be, with Urban Forestry, however they decide to go with the approvals, we believe we can preserve it if need be. But with talking to David, I think when we get our application and our permit through them, I believe that we're going to be able to work that out just okay.
Okay, thank you very much, that's helpful.
All right, thank you. Now we can take it into committee? Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. If none of my colleagues have any further comments, I do believe that, as the applicant said, this application is self-explanatory. It will be subject to forestry, so I'm not so concerned about what may happen to that tree, and that I do believe that they will work it out. So I'll motion to approve this application, and again, subject to forestry.
Number two? Yes.
Number two, condition number two.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Nipfel? All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, the application's been approved. All right, item number six. 273 Princess Avenue. This is an application for a new detached dwelling. We have variances for east side yard setback, height of side main walls, height of front and rear main walls, number of stories, main pedestrian level above established grade, building length, and coverage. On file, we have a survey, plans, revised list of variances, revised plans, a community planning report, and an urban forestry memo. All right, do we have our applicant?
Yes, it is me again, Michael Purger, and I am at 768 Mary Street North.
I was wondering if that was a typo.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. And we do have neighbors in attendance for this one, or online. So, first of all, I think you want to make some changes to the variances. Am I right?
Yes, yes, so according to the planning report, they had comments with variances two, three, and five. Variance two pertaining to the top of wall, and also number three is also top of wall. So one was for the front walls, for the sides. So they recommended that we be no higher than eight meters. So we had revised that and brought it down to 7.98. And also there's...
Sorry, just to stop you for a sec. So variance number two, you're changing from 8.18 to 7.92, did you say?
7.98.
Oh, 98, I'm sorry. 7.98. And then variance number three for the front walls and rear main wall, from 8.18 to 7.98 as well? Okay?
And variance number five was our pedestrian entrance, which we were at 1.98, and we have reduced it down to 1.37.
All right, thank you.
And then, yeah, and then we got the updated staff report acknowledging those revisions. And yeah, now they feel that it better meets the general intent, and everything's minor in nature.
All right, thank you. So because we have some residents, perhaps you could give us a brief presentation on the application?
Okay, so this is to build a new two-story slash three-story home, depending on how you look at it technically. So item number one is we are requesting a side yard reduction from 1.8 to 1.55. And the top of walls, which are kind of the same for item two and three, we're going to be below the eight, which was recommended, so we are now at 7.98. Again, technically, it's a three-story house, so we're asking for that variance from two stories to three stories. And yeah, again, the pedestrian entrance, which we had revised according to planning, is now at 1.37. And we're asking for a length of .98 meters, which we're supposed to be at 17, and we're at 17.98. And a coverage of 30%, which we are asking for 32.2.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? The revised plans, is that a complete set that reflects the new variances? Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to the neighbors. I believe they're both online.
Actually, in person?
Oh, they are?
They are.
Oh, okay, great. So let's start with... Well, it doesn't matter who comes first. Whoever wants to go first, please come to the podium. Just make the one over here. And just make sure the microphone's on. And we'll start with your name and address, please. I don't think the microphone's on. You have to click on the bottom?
Okay. Hi, I'm Regina Chewie on 266 Princess Avenue. A lot of the concerns have been addressed with the adjustments, especially for myself, it's number four, five. The entrance has been reduced to 1.27 from 1.98, so I'm okay with that. But for number... Variance number four, the... I would like to... I'm not really sure why it is three stories instead of two stories. That's one of my major concern. And it's just, in general, my feeling is like they're just trying to build a bigger house on a street that already have houses that is of good size. So yeah, I mainly oppose the three stories application.
All right, thanks. We'll get the applicant to address that once we've heard from everybody.
Sorry, can I stay here and help my neighbor out with the language? Thank you.
Hi, hi. Yeah, my name is Jing Chen, and I'm the owner of 277 Princess Avenue. Yeah, I'm here to oppose the... My no variance for my concern. So actually, we can see the number one, the setback reduced from 1.8 to 1.55. So maybe you can see this a little reduced, but we needed to consider the property as a whole property. See, the coverage is bigger, and the height is top... is really high. And this is... And actually, they put this high and bigger property is close to my side. Yeah, actually, I'm the east side neighbor. So this is definitely, I mean, to harm the enjoyment, and I'm not sure whether this for the long-term value for my property. And the same concern with my neighbor, 273 Regina, so we are not sure how to define the stories, two to three. And I actually, I do the research for the street and our community. There's no three-story detached house. Yeah, never. And yeah, so actually, it is do the... They do the change, so from the, I mean, the entrance from reduced to the height should be fine, yeah. And so the coverage, as I mentioned before, is bigger and tall. So I'm not sure why this... They wanted to put all the advantage in their property and to destroy our neighbor's enjoyment. Yeah, so I do recommend you consider the coverage, the setback, and especially the stories and the height. Thank you, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have another speaker?
Hello, everyone. I'm Zi Xia Tian. My address is 268 Princess Avenue. I'm here for opposing the number five. I got the letter. Actually, my English is so poor. I... My concerns...
You can speak for her.
It seemed to...
So number five, they changed it, so it's much lower now?
Oh, I will say... Oh, it's been改了是吗? Oh, yeah. I oppose number four.
The number of stories?
Yeah, but my concerns is seem to my neighbor Regina.
So mostly, we are concerned that changing one house from two stories to three stories will set a precedence for the rest of the neighborhood, regardless how it was being used. We just want it to be the same for all the community, just keeping the focus confirmed, like the unity of the community.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pam Penn. My address is 285 Princess Avenue. Yeah, I oppose the two and three number and six and seven, because they too high, the front and the cell, and the near neighborhood is working... The street is not comfortable. Yeah, and... 我知道，okay, yeah. 破坏了这个整体性.
Oh, she... Same point, that she doesn't want just one house out of the community to be sticking out, the uniformity.
Okay.
最后反对的是这几个，七，六，三，二，对，三，对，the two, the two... Okay. Yeah,还有容积率，这个cover，这个也是，yeah，对，the four, yeah, I oppose there, okay.
Okay, I think we get the picture. I think we understand what your concerns are. Thank you very much. You can sit down, and we'll ask the applicant to come back on and speak to your concerns. Thank you.
Yes, I am back.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so to address some of the comments. So the overall height, top of roof, we are not asking for a variance there, so our height is within the limits. If I go and address the side yards, we're basically maintaining that side yard where we are asking for a little bit of relief. We're maintaining what is the existing side yard there. And as far as the three-story goes, I mean, technically, there's a basement, a first and a second floor. And just the way the average grades work out to the basement and what the first floor is, so it becomes a technical thing where they call it a three-story house, but really, there is only a basement, a first and second floor. So depending on how we look at it, depending on where we are in the city, in some places, it is considered a two-story house. In this case, in North York, it's being considered... In this case, in North York, it's being considered a three-story house.
Maybe staff could put up the elevation, the front elevation drawing, and maybe the, just to point out to the residents what it looks, what it will look like. So uh, maybe you can just explain that, how the, I I think they missed some of your explanation of the two to three stories.
Yeah, so if if I'm looking at that front elevation, um, down the left side, let's say, so that is a basement window there. Um, so the the basement is raised a little bit, so that is a basement window. And then above that is the first floor and the second floor. So it, you know, it depends, like I said, it depends on where we are in the city. Um, some places is considered a two-story, some places is considered a three-story. It's a, it's a technical thing with numbers.
All right.
And you know, when, and when you do look at the street and the neighborhood, this is uh, this is definitely a precedent has been set with these houses. Um, yeah, so I mean, it's gonna fit right in with the neighborhood for sure.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have a question for the applicant? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a couple of questions. This elevation, does it reflect um the change that you just made to the variances? Because you came down about half a meter by point four eight meters. Um, you've reduced the height, but this looks to be, the two elevations uh in our agenda, the original and the revised look to be exactly the same. I'm, I'm questioning whether, is is this one actually, this elevation actually revised to show the modest reduction in height?
Yes, this is the one. So like again, the top of roof um did not change because we were within the limits of our top of roof. Um, what changed on this is you can see the the bubbled measurements. Um, it is the finished first floor, which is the pedestrian entrance, was reduced down to the recommended below one point four, so we're at one point three seven. And also the top of wall, the top of wall also bubbled, where we're at seven point nine eight, has also been lowered.
Okay, and my, my second question has to do with the rear deck. You've got a, a deck that um, if it were on the ground, wouldn't be a problem, but it's a long way up in the ground. If we could look at the west elevation. It seems to me that that poses quite a privacy problem for the people at two seventy-one. So my question is, have you um some measure that you're undertaking to prevent the overlook from that deck onto the property next door?
Well, as of right now, no, but I would be more than willing if there was a condition put in to provide privacy screening. That would, uh, that'd be okay, and that way it will provide them the privacy for us on the deck and also us overlooking them.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? No? All right, let's take it into committee. Ms. Martin?
Uh, I just wanna say, I think the applicant is done a good, um, has uh addressed the comments well from community planning report and explained the third story versus uh two-story versus three-story. He does meet the, he does not have a variance for the height of the building. Um, the actual size of the building is more in keeping with what is surrounding. It is definitely an existing house that is one of the smallest on, on that stretch of uh, of roadway. And um, he is also keeping the existing side yard setback. That is, uh, the house is already sitting there at that point. So I am, I am, um, I would like to approve this application.
Subject to?
Uh, subject to uh the conditions laid out in the community planning report. And also.
Forestry three?
Uh, I don't think there was a forestry condition, but I'm not.
Yeah, there's forestry number three.
Oh, and forestry condition number three.
And privacy screening.
And privacy screen um on the west side of the proposed deck, rear deck.
And we need a dimension for that.
Uh, one point five meter high, uh.
From the deck, from the floor, measured from the floor.
From the, from the floor of the deck, measured up, one point five meter high, uh opaque.
Measured from the floor.
Measured from the finished elevation of the deck, floor elevation.
Thank you. As amended?
You have a problem?
Well, no, just wanna, I I I think also you, you wanna mention, he he revised the plan, right?
Yes, so just say as amended.
Yeah, I tied it to the conditions in the planning report. And I think he did explain, um, and he did revise the, the entrance steps in his revised drawings.
Right, and I think uh community planning was asking that the uh application be tied to the elevations. The ones they stated in the report.
For the October second.
Thank you, Ms. Anker, yeah. All right. All right, are we clear, staff? Is that okay? All right, thank you. Uh, so Ms. Anker, are you willing to second that motion? Thank you very much. All right, all in favor of the motion? Uh, that is unanimous. The application has been approved as amended. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven, Christine Crescent. This is an application to, hold on. To alter the detached dwelling by constructing a one-story rear addition, a rear second-story balcony, and a basement walkout on the west side of the dwelling. We have variances for west side yard setback and area of a platform. On file, we have a survey, site plan, plans, supporting material, community planning report, ravine and natural feature protection memo, TRCA report to the applicant, and TRCA updated report, and a letter of objection from twenty-five Christine Crescent, and a late presentation. Let's have our applicant.
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Ali Razafakhri Shustari, and uh, I'm here regarding the property twenty, uh, seven Christine Crescent.
And your address, please?
Uh, twenty-seven Christine Crescent, uh, North York, Ontario.
Sorry, your address, not the.
Oh, sorry, uh, yeah, uh, fifty-nine Oak Avenue, Richmond, Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, actually, uh, this application is for a renovation of the existing detached dwelling, not a new build. And importantly, the main exterior walls uh will remain exactly in their existing locations. There is no change to the building footprint. Uh, based on the zoning examiner uh comment, uh, I'm talking about the west side yard setback. Uh, the existing west wall has been there for uh more than thirty years and will not be relocated, extended, or altered. Uh, this means uh there will be no new impact on the neighboring property in terms of light, privacy, or spacing. And the condition simply maintains the existing built-for, which already fits well within the character and the rhythm of the neighborhood. Therefore, I believe that this variance is minor, desirable, and consistent with the intent of both zoning and the official plan. And about the second comment, rear second-story platform, uh, uh, it sits more than one point eight meters from the sideline, aside lot line, and behind the required rear yard setback. If uh you look at the site plan photo, uh, you'll see that this house actually sits farther back on the lot compared to both neighboring houses. Uh, this means the proposed platform will position behind the rear uh facet of the adjacent homes, which effectively minimize any potential overlook or privacy concern. They uh, and I believe that there is a neighbor's concern about the uh visibility from the platform toward the window. Uh, I should say that it's important to note that the platform is entirely within, uh, within the required zoning setback. It's more than one point eight meters from the property line. And uh, if the owner wished to build a new house or and had an extension, the zoning by law would allow windows or even a deck uh in that location as long as the structure remain more than one point two meters from the property line, which this proposal already exceeds. Uh, also, it worth noting that the window the neighbor refers to currently has a full view into my applicant's backyard. And uh, the, there is a privacy issue about that window as well for my applicant. Uh, we have uh no objection from the TRCA, and uh, there is no any uh comment from the uh kind of uh on staff report. And in conclusion, I want to wrap it up. Uh, I want to say that both variances are modest and technical in nature. They are fully compatible with the existing con- and conditions. Uh, there is no any alteration, changes, or extension to the main walls, and respect the character of the neighborhood. And uh, I also want to add that this house is for my app- applicant living, not for any uh sale or investment as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you tell me if the work is completed? From the photograph that was submitted by your neighbor, it looks as though the um, the deck is already there.
Uh, the, yeah, the, 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 the deck is, yes, uh, uh, is uh built over there, and it's finished.
Did you discuss that deck with your neighbor before you built it?
Uh, I don't think so, no, my applicant didn't do that. Because uh, I I should say, sorry, uh, can I add this? Uh, because uh, he thought that uh he's uh kind of uh has, has a setback from the property line more than one point eight, and also uh is uh compliant with the rear side yard setback. And uh, uh, maybe it uh, it's not needed to uh talk about to the neighbor because there was the window, uh, has a full visibility to the backyard of my applicant's house.
But, but the window, it's quite obvious that the window is also um directly overlooking where the deck's going. So there is a conflict there. Would you be open to, um, after the applicant, after your neighbor speaks, would you be open to screening that deck from view next door?
Uh, I would discuss that with my applicant, and yeah, uh, to uh address my, uh, his uh neighbor's concern about the.
Okay, we need, we need you to do more than discuss it with the applicant, because if that becomes a condition, it would be a condition applied today. So could, could you uh think about that while you're listening to the next-door neighbor?
Sure, yeah, I will do that.
Thank you. I'm not sure we have the neighbors. The neighbor in the audience? And we don't have anyone online, do we? No. We have the letter, but we don't have anybody. So um, I suggest we take it into committee, and then we can discuss whether we want to, unless you wanna ask the applicant again.
I, 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 I think the, the um material that was submitted by the neighbor is, is pretty convincing uh and indicates a problem of privacy. I personally, I don't have a difficulty with any other uh aspect of this application, but I do think a screen along the um, the side of that deck would be an appropriate addition to the application.
So we can recommend that.
Pardon?
We can recommend.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, all right, any other uh comments? No? Okay, let's, let's take it into committee. Oh, Ms. Anker?
Oh, yeah, through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make the comment about um applications that I see coming more and more, where they are completed, and just to share my message that I don't think that that's acceptable. I mean, even just based on that, I, I feel as if you've, you know. And I know we have um four tests to look at, but I, I don't think it's minor um for the reasons that that overlook is ridiculous. And a photo says a thousand words, but it's just really coming to the committee with things already done, and then begging for forgiveness later, I find unacceptable. So I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. I will just point out that I think that it meets the setback requirements. It's the area of the balcony that the variance is for, correct, in this case? Did I get that wrong?
Yes, it's the area.
Yeah. And so on this side of the property, the, on the, where the balcony is, it's meeting the side yard setback. It's the other side that has the variance, from what I understand, just to clarify, Ms. Anker. But I understand.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm okay with the workaround for the privacy.
Okay.
Um, barrier as well, so I wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I um, after the discussion, I, I frankly don't have a difficulty with um the proposal. I, I agree with Ms. Anker, though, um, coming with the work completed um is, is a risk. Um, the other alternative to the committee is to not approve variance number two, which means that in theory, that platform would not be, uh, would not be lawful. I think that's an extreme approach in this case, and I, as the um, as the neighbor already indicated, he was looking for some uh resolution and proposed to screen. So I'm, I'm happy with um recommending approval of this application subject to there being a one point five meter um privacy screen provided along the east uh boundary of the rear second-story platform.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second there? Ms. Anker, thank you.
Um, do we want to say the word opaque as well? Because that is what the neighbor had requested, that, you know, there could be a privacy screen, but it could still be see-through and the direct contact with that uh view, I think maybe if we use the word opaque would be.
Okay, and in the, I, I think what we've tried to do in the past, and your point's well taken. We've tried to free it up a little bit by not putting opaque in to allow for more design flexibility. But in this case, you're, I think you're quite right. It's, it needs to block the view, so opaque in this case would make sense.
All right.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Anker. All right, all in favor of the motion before us? That is unanimous. The application's been approved. All right. Yes.
Thank you so much, and yes, I, we will install the uh privacy screen over there.
Thank you. All right, seventy-seven A Ernest Avenue. This is an application to construct a multi-unit fourplex. We have variances for east side yard setback, west side yard setback, and lot coverage. On file, we have a survey, plans, tree photos, a tree site plan, urban forestry conditions, and letters of concern or objection from seventy-five and seventy-seven Ernest Avenue. We have our applicant.
Good morning.
Good morning. Name and address.
Uh, I'm Hazan of fourteen Leswin Road.
Thank you.
Of Hazan Design Studio.
All right. Um, we do have a, a neighbor who, well, we've received uh letters from two, but we also have a neighbor who wishes to speak to the application. Are they here, or are they?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Uh, staff have tried to reach out to the resident of seventy-seven Ernest, and were unsuccessful.
All right, well, let's, let's just, sorry, go ahead with a, a brief presentation on your application, in case there's.
Sure, yeah, I also just wanted to point out that seventy, um, seventy-five did withdraw their objection letter um and have actually provided a letter of support, uh, which we have included.
Oh, do we have that staff? Oh.
Yeah, it's on screen at the moment.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, um, maybe just address the variances. Maybe just address the variances then.
Sure, sure. Okay, so there's, there's really, I mean, we can just jump into the presentation that we prepared. You know, let's go straight to the variances. If you go to, continue down a little bit more. Next slide, please. Next slide, next slide. Keep going if you don't mind. Next slide. We'll just jump in straight to the variances. Next slide as well, please. Okay, one slide, sorry, a couple of slides previous where we've addressed, addressing the variances. It's page six, please. Okay, so just, just to give, oh, sorry, just to give some, some context. So the, the, the site was previously severed by a previous owner. It is a relatively narrow site. And our client is looking to put a fourplex on this property. One of the challenges with this site, and this is addressing really these variances related to side yard setback, is that the side yard setback is significant for the width of the property. So the width is only 7.75 meters. But because I guess, you know, some of the plots in that area are wider, the, the side yard setback is 1.8. So really, once you take the side yard setback of both sides, 1.8, we end up with a very skinny structure, 14, 4.15 meters, which is 13 and a half feet, which is really, really challenging to really build anything on that, a house or a multiplex. And therefore, that's why we are seeking variances for the side yard setback. If we can go to the next slide, please. And then with regards to coverage, which is the other variance, we're, we're really only asking for a very minor increase in coverage of 3.11%. And when we did review other applications in the area, there's a lot of precedent for increasing coverage in this neighborhood. So those, those are really the variances. If we, we could go to the next, we have a few more minutes, we'll go to the next couple of slides. So just, just to summarize, we, we did, you know, if you don't mind, just go actually to the next slide. Sorry, previous, previous one? I think you keep jumping ahead. But quickly, try slide eight. So it's showing my connection is poor. I don't know if you can hear me. Is this, this might be the other, the old, the old presentation. There was an updated one, version two. There we go. Yeah, if we don't mind, if you don't mind, keep going down the list. The pages. Okay, yeah, that's the page I'm looking for. Oh, sorry, jumped ahead again. Page nine, please.
Going the wrong way.
Sorry, page nine.
One more. There we go.
Okay, fine. So, so the client did try and engage the neighbors. We, we did leave a letter for 77. My client went to their home to discuss, but, you know, wasn't able to get touch and we haven't heard back from, from that neighbor. He did engage with the neighbor at 75 Ernest. There was some concern with the windows facing their property. We, we did revise the drawings and we have submitted them to the committee. We've also agreed to build a, a privacy fence at, at our expense. And the, the neighbor was satisfied with the revisions, which we, again, we've included in the latest set that we've sent to the committee. And therefore, they were happy to withdraw their, their letter of objection. I think just in summary, it's, you know, it's a good, it's a really good site for this proposal. We are able to, to create rental properties and enable young families to move into the area, enable people to downsize to this, to this, you know, and remain, you know, downsize and remain in the area that they're in. There's a relatively good transport system nearby. And it is within walking distance to a couple of schools. And we do think it is in line with the goals of E-Hon and, and the general goal to increase housing within the city of Toronto. So that's, that's the presentation. I kind of jumped through quite quickly, but
That's okay.
Apologies on the technical, the technical glitches with the pages.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? Mr. Nipfel?
I just want a minor question. You indicated that the people from 75 have withdrawn their objection. The, the person on the other side has a, here we are, has a terrace overviewing their property. Now, it doesn't, I think part of the terrace is behind the wall of the building, but has there been any discussion about whether or not that terrace poses a privacy problem for the next door neighbor? This is the terrace on the top lot.
We, we haven't been able to engage with them. We, we've attempted to. But we can put a privacy, privacy screen if that is a concern. They, they didn't actually address privacy in their concerns. So, you know, and I don't think it was addressed in their letter as far as I can recall. It was, it was more about water runoff, but their height, their, their site is higher. And they also had, you know, the usual concerns of parking. But I don't think, if I, if I, you know, you can pull up their letter if you'd like, but I don't recall privacy being a factor.
But they might not have been able to read the plans either.
Thank you very much. That's helpful.
All right. And we don't have any, we don't have anyone registered to speak, correct? All right. Let's take it into committee. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I really sympathize with the applicant on this one. This is one difficult site. It's narrow. It's very narrow. And to be able to accommodate a building of this scale on such a narrow site is quite a challenge. And I, and I actually think that the applicant's done a reasonably good job. I appreciated the concerns of 70, I hope I don't get these two mixed up. 75, the, the person who commented on the windows. I can understand that by looking at the drawings, you indicate that all of the windows are in fact facing into their property. They have a larger property than on the other side. And they also mentioned the fact that the side yard setback was perhaps too narrow. Given the constraint of the site, that's a challenge. But I, but I would sort of nod my hat to the, to the comment that it's not just a side yard setback in this case. It's also a front entrance because that's a major entrance into the building. I do think that the amount of space you provided, given the narrowness of the site, is reasonable. I would have been happy if it was a little bigger, but I just don't think you have the space. The site's very, very narrow. I do think that the applicant's gone to some pains to try and reduce the visual impact of the bulk of the building by the way in which the top floor is configured. And I would like to suggest that the application be tied to elevation or the approval be tied to elevation drawings for that reason. So having said all that, I, I would like to move approval of the application subject to forestry condition number three and the bulk and elevations are to be substantial in accordance with the elevation drawings that we have on file. With regard to the top terrace, I'm, I'm of two minds. I think privacy could potentially be a problem, but, and, and perhaps the next door neighbor did not identify that issue. This is one case where I think a big privacy screen would add to the bulk of the building and that would be negative. So I would at this point be inclined to not input, not include a privacy screen as a condition and hope that the goodwill between the two neighbors would continue and that if a screen of some sort is necessary, they could come up with something together. So that would be my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nipfel. Just, just to, can I just clarify with staff? We don't have the neighbor online, correct? Okay, just wanted to
Sorry, I did, sorry, Madam Chair, I should have updated you. I did manage to get ahold of the, the neighbor and he indicated he is, does not wish to speak.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just want to not make a
Thank you for checking.
Make an error. Okay. Sorry, Ms. Martin?
I, I just have a comment because between the applicant and the, the neighbor at 75, they had come to a, you know, a resolution to put in a privacy fence along that property line. Can we include that?
Oh.
And I think we should because I think once this goes through, there could be, I mean, those are just words said, right?
Okay, let's see. We are, I'm just trying to figure out which side that is, 75, right?
Yeah.
Which is west, on the west property line? Do we have the letter up again, that letter from 75?
It's not in the package, but I did read the letter. I recall it might have gone in a late package.
Their resolution letter? Sorry? Yeah.
Oh.
That's what, yeah, that's what Ms. Martin's saying.
He withdrew his objection based on the fact that the applicant was willing to put in a privacy fence. I think it was actually 1.8 meter high privacy fence between Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Am I dreaming? I don't think so.
No, it says to install a fence along the shared west side property line for privacy and safety.
States six feet, which is approximately 1.8 meters high.
I don't see that, but just says a fence.
Pardon me, the wording of this also brings into question whether we should be tying this to the elevations and
Right.
I, because we're taking windows off. So I'd be inclined to amend my motion to say that the the bulk of the building and the, and the massing of the building is to be as shown on the elevation drawings so that we don't confuse the windows.
Yeah, the arrangement. Do, does staff follow that? That the, I guess the height and it's like everything but the windows.
The bulk and the massing, I, it's, it's, it's the roof form that I frankly think is really commendable. And where does it say about the fence?
I would agree. It's in the letter from 75, the follow-up letter, right there. It's the first bullet.
I have no difficulty with that being an added condition if you'd like.
I just worry that if we do that and not the windows and, you know, do we reduce the impact of the letter? Like, they obviously have an arrangement between themselves. So I'm not sure whether we should make it a condition. No?
Madam Chair, as usual, we're not charged with enforcing a private agreement, nor should you sort of be in that area.
I think maybe we'll just leave that as a private agreement between the owners. Okay.
Fair enough.
All right, so we do have a motion on the floor. Yes, Mr. Nipfel? A motion to approve the application subject to forestry number three.
Right.
And tying the
Bulk and massing.
Bulk and massing of the, including height, bulk massing height to the elevation drawings attached to the application. Yes.
So I'm just, my mind races to the zone examiner who is going to read this. It's going to be a little blurry. If you're not inclined to tie it to the window location, perhaps you might want to be explicit with that.
Maybe we say the height and roof line design. How about that? Is that clear?
Yep, that's fine.
My issue is that you're not really supposed to be tying design. You don't have that area to, you don't have that levity to say that.
But that's what we do when we tie it to elevations, right? It's tied
They can change that design. You're not, they're not obligated to lock in that design as long as they meet the bylaw.
True.
But, but if, we've, we've done this in the past, I don't sure of the wording we've used, where the actual form of the building addressed a number of issues. I believe that's the case here. The form of the building, I think, is responsible for there not being more objection. I think that the applicant has gone to some pains to reduce the impact of the building by the way in which the third floor is configured. And so what I was after is tying somehow to the fact that this third floor doesn't get redesigned to just be a flat slab. And so my wording there was that the, the configuration and the bulk of the building is to be substantially in accordance with the elevation drawings.
I think we could just say that it be the development, that it be developed substantially in accordance with the elevation plans because I believe the windows, the, the private agreement between the owners is to remove some of the windows. So I don't think it'll impact the elevation drawings if there's less windows. Okay? So I think it's okay to do that.
Okay.
Is that okay?
And it's all the elevations?
Yes.
So it's going to be substantially in accordance with?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a seconder?
Did we include, I think it was forestry condition?
Yes, we did. Okay. Mr. Swartz?
Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. The application has been approved. All right, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you. All right, um, our applicant for item nine? But we need to talk to him. Yeah? He needs to be here. Mr. Locasano, are you there? He's online. Hello? Are you there, Mr. Locasano? We can't hear you if you are.
Madam Chair, I just tried calling your number, it's their general work number.
Oh.
I got a voice recording. Perhaps we can move to the next one.
Okay, sure. Let's do that. Number ten, four sixty-five Hounslow Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage and a rear deck. We have variances for height of building, front exterior main walls, floor space index, area of rear deck, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, and number of stories and coverage. On file, we have a survey, cover letter, revised plans, superseded plans, an arborist report, site photos, a tree protection plan, and a tree site plan. Do we have our applicant for this one?
Hello?
Hello, good morning, afternoon, I guess, sorry.
Yes, my name is Joe Battaglia, I'm the architect representing-
And your address?
My address is ten fifty McNichol Avenue, Unit fourteen, Scarborough.
All right, we, uh, we don't have anyone in attendance for this application, but does anyone have any questions to the applicant? Sorry, oh yeah. Do you have any changes to make to the application today?
We, uh, we changed based on the recommendations of, of the community planning, whatever you call it. So we can go over those if you want.
Yes, let's start at the beginning.
Okay. Number one is removed, which is the maximum permitted height, where we proposed the ten point one two and permitted is ten, so we were, we got back to below, or ten, that is to say ten.
You're, you're cutting in and out a bit on your, we hear the beginning of what you say and then I don't know if you're turning away from the phone, but if you could make sure-
I'm gonna try to bring the computer closer to me.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, number one is the height, variance, which we, we are removing. We're staying with the, with the ten meter height instead of ten point one three.
Okay.
The second one is the maximum permitted height of all front exterior main walls, seven point five meters. We have gone down to seven point seven one from eight point three seven.
And just to clarify, what variance is that, number?
Number two, chapter ten point two oh four oh ten.
No, that's okay, they just need the variance number, okay?
Number two. Number three, the maximum permitted floor space index, one six times, area of lot, we, we have removed.
You've removed it entirely?
So, uh, hang on a sec.
We're still having some audio issues.
I, uh, let me, let me, um, yes, okay, number three, we removed the, from point six?
Yeah, this was already under recommendation, they said that-
Yeah, but what do you have, point six is permitted?
Eliminate variance in question number two.
Oh. Yeah, we're eliminating number three, looks like, yes, yes.
You're removing variance number three?
Yeah.
Eliminating, okay. Well, what about four?
Maximum permitted floor area of the secondary platform, that's a forceful meters. We, we are keeping that.
You're keeping the variance at twenty-three point four two?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, five?
The minimum required side yard setback. We had one point two one, permitted is one point, uh, required, sorry, is one point eight, we're going to one point four three as recommended by, by planning.
One point four three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Numbers. We, uh, same one point eight, so we're going to one point four two.
For number six?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, as, as recommended. Yeah.
And seven, I guess stays the same?
Uh, seven stays, yeah.
And what about coverage, eight?
Yes, um, as per recommendations, we have reduced from our thirty-three point eight to thirty-two point four. Where thirty percent is permitted as, as recommended by planning.
Okay, thirty-two point four.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. This was a, was this a late staff report?
Could be. When was this? October sixth, it says.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, um, we, does anyone want a presentation or? No? All right. Are we okay to take this into committee then? All right? Mr. Niffel, oh, Mr. Niffel's got a question.
I just have a question. Do you have any concern with providing a screen on the west side of your rear deck which is elevated?
Is this from the planning staff report that you're?
No, I, I'm, if you look at the elevations, you can see the rear deck is actually elevated a full story above-
Oh, okay, I see.
And that's a problem only on the west, not the east.
All right, um, did you hear that, Mr. Battaglia?
I don't know if he was still on.
Did we lose you? Sorry, 'cause I said we were going into committee, possibly muted him. Can we bring him back?
Yes, I, I was okay with it.
You're okay with the privacy screen, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's take it into committee. Mister, oh. Anyone? Mr. Niffel?
Um, thank you, Madam Chairman, I think this is a reasonable development as revised. The revisions that were proposed by Planning Department, I think, are, are, are good and reasonable and, and improve the project substantially. So I'd like to recommend approval of the, of the application as revised with variances one and three eliminated, and variances two, five, six, and eight modified as per the Planning Department report. In addition, that the setbacks be developed substantially in accordance with revised site plan, and that the height of front entrances develop, to be developed substantially in accordance with revised front elevation, and the provision of a one point five meter privacy screen on the west side of the rear deck.
Thank you very much, that was a mouthful. And Mr. Swartz, to second that, thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion? It is unanimous, the application is amended, it's been approved. All right, have we located Mr. Locasano? Hello?
We have a call-in user, we just don't know who it is, so we've unmuted this person. If they can just identify themselves, so we just know who we're speaking to.
Could you please identify yourself? We are looking for Mr. Locasano on item number nine, forty-two Sherwood Avenue. We can always go on to item eleven. Oh, go on, all right. Okay.
Hello?
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 Yes, hello.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hello?
Oh, he doesn't seem to be able to hear us. Yes, we can hear you.
Now, now?
Uh, not now. Oh. Are you there? Yes? Any change in his status, or is he still unmuted? Oh. Okay, let's go to item eleven, we'll come back to that one. Oh. Item eleven's not on the, the address isn't on there. Eighty-seven Hillhurst Boulevard. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage. We have variances for parking access, building length, floor space index, parking space width, parking space length. On file, we have survey plans, cover letter, a planning justification letter, an arborist report, correspondence with planning staff, transportation services memo, forestry memo, a letter of objection from eighty-four Hillhurst Boulevard, a petition signed by a number of neighbors on Hillhurst Boulevard, a late community planning report, and late revised plans. All right, and I'm thinking we have the applicant at our podium. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Chair and fellow committee members. My name is Maya Marquesi, I'm a planner at Design Plan Services located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue.
Thank you. And, uh, we don't, is anyone in the audience here on this item? Oh, all right, thank you very much. So we have one person in person, and, uh, I guess we will have a brief presentat-, first of all, any changes to make to the application today?
You, Madam Chair, no changes are being made.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's have a brief presentation, so, for the benefit of the neighbors, and, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to start off by saying we're here today to secretly for five variances related to the proposed dwelling. We've reviewed transportation services comments, and they have no objections to the application, and are recommending four conditions which the owners are agreeable to. Discuss the proposal with community planning, and note that they didn't have any concerns with the proposal. I understand urban forestry's recommended refusal of variance number one due to the proposed removal of the existing maple tree to accommodate the driveway. I recognize forestry's rule in reviewing potential impacts to trees, however, the matter before the committee today relates specifically to the requested variances. And the owners are committed to working collaboratively with urban forestry staff through their separate permit process should the committee choose to approve this application today. Urban forestry has made it clear that approval of this application in no way represents approval of the tree removal. Moving on to the variances, the first one is related to the driveway access from Hillhurst Boulevard, whereas access is required from the Flanking Street Mona Drive. This access provides a functional layout, allowing for greater backyard space, as opposed to the existing driveway, which is accessed from Mona and significantly cuts, cuts into the rear yard and limits outdoor amenity space. There are examples of other corner lots in the neighborhood with approved driveway access from their frontage streets such as three hundred and three sixteen Litton Boulevard, two oh seven Strath Allen Boulevard, four nine six Briar Hill Avenue, and one eighty-five Hillhurst Boulevard, demonstrating that this condition is consistent with the established character of the area. Variance two is related to the building length of seventeen point six five meters, where seventeen meters- meters is permitted. Um, this length is limited, limited to a projection of the breakfast nook off the main floor of the rear dwelling and the remainder of the main floor as well as the second story will have a length of up to fifteen-point-eight-five meters, um, in keeping with the permitted seventeen meters. Um, additionally, the existing dwelling as well as the proposed dwelling, um, or sorry, the existing dwelling, um, is greater in length than the proposed dwelling as you can see in the site plan. Um, based on these reasons, length is not anticipated to contribute to additional massing and will be compatible and similar length approvals have been, um, approved in the area as per my submitted justification. Variance three related to the proposed FSI of point-five-three times the lot area is in keeping with approvals and trends in the neighborhood. The additional floor strips, floor space will be distributed over two stories and is in, and is within the as-of-right building envelope requiring no variances to setbacks, height, depth, or landscaping. And there are, uh, many approvals nearby with similar or greater FSIs such as eighty-five Hillhurst for point-six-two times the lot area, eighty-two Hillhurst for point-five-two-five times lot area, point-six-three Hillhurst for point-six-nine times the lot area, and one-twenty-seven Hillhurst for point-six times the lot area. Variances four and five are related to the parking space dimensions. Um, if staff can show the ground floor plan, um, the proposed garage will contain two parking spaces with widths of two-point-six-six meters and lengths of five-point-three-three meters and five-point-six meters, whereas two-point-nine by five-point-six meters is required for obstructed spaces. Um, only one space is deficient in length and as seen on the plans, this is due to the step to enter the mudroom. Both spaces exceed the standard two-point-six-meter wood typically used for unobstructed spaces. And I'd like to point out that there is no minimum requirement to provide parking here, however, they are being, two spaces are being provided and have been designed to be functional and meet the needs of the owners. I've also reviewed the neighbors' objections, which relate specifically to the existing tree and not to the variances themselves. Uh, I want to acknowledge their concerns and reiterate that any tree-related matters will be addressed through the urban forestry permit process following this committee's decision. And based on the provided justification, it's my professional opinion that the proposal fits in with the existing and planned context of the neighborhood, is consistent with redevelopment trends, and for these reasons, the proposal meets the four tests set out in section forty-five-one of the Planning Act and represents good planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If you had, instead of a double-car garage, if you had a single-car garage, would it, uh, allow you to address the concerns of forestry? Because I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with an approval when forestry is recommending non-approval for the save, and, and it's a substantial tree. I don't think that this is a, a recommendation, uh, from forestry that can be ignored. So, one of the questions that I had in going through the agenda was you've got a double-car garage, if you had a single-car garage and you adjusted that and the driveway, could you save the tree?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, adjusting to a single-car garage would still require getting a permit from forestry. Um, there may be a way to adjust the driveway so that it's only an injury instead of a removal, but that is something that, um, the owners are prepared to deal with through the urban forestry process and work with urban forestry staff to come to some kind of resolution.
Okay, I, you and I disagree. I think that's something that needs to be resolved before a decision here. So, you do feel that a single-car garage might actually allow you some flexibility to deal with the issue?
Through you, Madam Chair, I don't think it's, um, a, a single-car garage will make the difference here. I think it's the position and width of the driveway that would affect the tree and...
Okay, so that's, that doesn't agree with what you said earlier. So, basically, you don't think a single-car garage is going to be a helpful revision to make? Relative to the tree?
Relative to the tree, no.
Okay.
A single or double-car garage, um, will not matter for the, in regard to the tree, it's more so the width of the driveway.
Um, okay.
I was going to mention, I was gonna ask whether a reduced curb cut could possibly help with the tree, not so much the garage. I don't think the garage matters. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Have you had discussions with forestry on it? Regarding that tree, the city tree?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, I have not personally had discussions with forestry. I'm not sure if our arborist, um, who's working on this project has. I believe they've been in touch, but I don't know if they've discussed specifically this tree.
Okay. And the arborist's report, the arborist's opinion regarding the tree?
Is that it's in fair to poor condition.
Okay. I mean, obviously, the city doesn't want to, um, have trees injured or removed for development, but when I looked at the picture of the tree, looks like it could be, have some issues, but, um, all right, thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Mr. Swartz?
Okay, so, um. I don't have as many concerns as my colleague does about this tree. But what I do have concerns about, uh, is what you're gonna do, as you said about, you're gonna work with urban forestry. So, maybe you could just outline, maybe my colleagues know about this better than I do. What are you gonna do if you get approval here? In terms of planting trees, et cetera?
Through you, mister, or Madam Chair, um, that is more in the purview of the arborist and, um, they have every intention to work with forestry staff, as I mentioned, to get the permit, as forestry staff noted in their report. Approval of this application by no means means approval of the removal of the tree and they are going to be working with staff to address their concerns.
All right, thank you. Um, let's hear from the neighbor.
Good afternoon, um, Madam Chair and Committee. Um, before I speak, I would like you to look at the submission that I...
Can we start with your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Antoinette Whitman, eighty-four Hillhurst Boulevard.
Thank you.
The, the picture of the tree that was submitted by the arborist was taken November twenty, twenty-two-four. The majority of leaves were down and the report that was submitted stated that the tree was in fair to poor condition. However, in my submission, I have two photos of the tree which were taken September twenty-ninth and the photos illustrate a full, healthy tree with a full canopy. And to support my photos, the urban forestry report has stated that it is a healthy tree. I'm here to support three submissions to the committee of adjustment, all of which oppose the removal of the city maple tree at eighty-seven Hillhurst Boulevard in order to pave a double driveway. The submissions include my letter, a petition by neighbors, and a report by urban forestry. Instead of removal of the tree, my letter suggests an adjustment to the landscape design whereby a single driveway be constructed curb side, side, which, once past the tree, the driveway widens to the desired double width. There are precedents in the neighborhood where this design is employed. Photos from five-six-three, five-nine-five, six-oh-three, and six-one-seven Castlefield are but a few examples of new homes with driveways configured to preserve a city tree. The photos are included in my submission. In summary, I believe that the preservation of a healthy city tree is in keeping with the official plan and I object to its removal. With an adjustment to the landscape design, a driveway can be constructed at eighty-seven Hillhurst without removal of the tree.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions of the resident? No, all right, thank you. Um, all right, let's have our applicant back up.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to acknowledge the suggestions made by the neighbor, um, Mrs. Whitman regarding the driveway design. This is something that the arborist and architect and owners can explore and discuss perhaps with urban forestry staff, um, but I just would like to reiterate that removal of the tree, um, isn't related necessarily to this variance and that will be addressed through the separate urban forestry permit process.
All right, thanks. And I guess if urban forestry were to refuse the permit and refuse any change to the driveway that might be able to save the tree and work for both, the other option in this case is to have a driveway off of Mona, correct? That would be your only choice?
Essentially, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Any further questions of the applicant? Mr. Niffel?
I'd just make a, a point, the, the tree is, in fact, relevant to the variances because the variance has to do with where you put the driveway.
Madam Chair, if you want, we can put the forestry, they specifically cite which variance it's related to.
Variance number one.
Yeah. So, why don't we put the forestry one? There is some discussion that is not related, forestry seems to indicate which variance is impacted.
It does, and it's in... The forestry, further up. It's the other forestry report, there's two forestry reports. There it is, there. Recommend against approval of variance number one. So, in fact, it's, as this would result in the removal of a healthy city-owned tree, so it's definitely related.
I take it that was a comment?
Yes, yeah.
Not a question?
No, I, I just wanted to...
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, I think we're okay, we'll take this into committee now. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I think the preservation of this tree is important. Um, forestry, uh, doesn't often recommend denial, um, unless it's a pretty severe case, and this appears to be something that, it's a substantial city tree. Um, as the neighbor indicated, it, it's, in her view, in good condition. I'd like to thank the neighbor for her, um, information and her presentation. I, um, I'm, I'm not comfortable with turning down variance number one just yet, I think there needs to be more work done, um, with forestry. So, my motion would be that the application be deferred to allow the applicant to, um, resolve the issue of the city-owned tree before, um, we make a decision.
All right, Ms. Sankar's requesting to comment?
Yeah, thank you, and I really appreciate what my colleague, um, remember, Niffel has, uh, indicated. Um, I too, I'm very concerned about this, but I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, if we, the staff report does also indicate exactly what the forestry report, uh, indicates, which is eliminate variance number one. So, I'm thinking, I mean, rather than defer, if there's any discussion that, you know, this project, no matter if we had to subject it to the staff report as well as to urban forestry and improve in principle, um, you know, it, would that, uh, it, the, the application wouldn't go through if urban forestry is not in agreement. And I know that Mr. Ostock and team, um, work really hard to ma, make sure that they are doing right by every application. So, for them to have come back with that sort of decision, it does weigh on me, um, very much. So, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of tossing between actually just denying this application or moving forward and making it subject to all of those conditions, like, fully, um, including urban forestry. Be happy to hear what anyone says.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Martin?
Uh, I, I don't think we should, um, uh, my opinion is we should not deny this application. I like the deferral to work with forestry, um, because the, uh, there, the design clearly faces Hillhurst and if they can work out to, uh, make sure they maintain the tree through some creative design, then I think we should give them a chance to do that. The applicant.
Uh, Mr. Swartz?
Okay, so, uh, so I agree with my colleague. I, I would, I would approve this. Um, I've got a, a couple of comments on the tree. Well, first of all, uh, and maybe I don't understand this as well as my colleague, but, uh, it, it appears to me that the applicant still has to work with, uh, through the process. And if they can't work through the process, maybe they'll scale back the, uh, garage in a way that, uh, accommodates a, a vehicle. I looked at the, um, Google Maps just to see what this tree looks like, and it's pretty big, and I don't like to lose trees, I like trees as much as anybody likes trees. But I think maybe, uh, urban forestry ought to work with this applicant, 'cause you've got quite a, quite a significant, um, support in the neighborhood for this application. The application looks like it's good. Um, it seems like the tree is the only thing in the way and there might be a way around it, maybe planting other trees, maybe doing something. And also, I note, this tree, as beautiful as it is, is a Norway maple. And I don't know if you know anything about Norway maples, but they are not native, uh, trees, uh, they tend to squeeze out other trees. This one's been around, it's big, but I would rather just approve this, let the applicant, what's, what is otherwise a really good plan, it seems to be, work with the, uh, work, work with staff and try to come to something that works for everybody.
Thank you. I'll just throw my two cents in as well. Um, I actually agree with you, Mr. Swartz. I don't see the harm in approving the application because they are compelled to work with forestry. I think there might be a workaround in terms of possibly narrowing the curb cut in that area, um, and still accessing the driveway. And if not, because it is a corner lot, they will have to maintain the driveway off of Mona. So, it, it's one or the other. Um, Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and through, to add to that as well, I mean, I, I could understand that because regardless of whether you approve this subject to, you know, community planning or forestry, a, and forestry, they still would have to work with forestry regardless of, you know, um, what happens. Um, so, I'm, I'm sort of not in favor with a deferral only because also that adds extra pressure, extra cost to administration, city, all of the hidden behind-the-scenes things. And we've been hearing the, uh, the, you know, um, the application today. Um, there are other options than just, that would a, a, amount to the same outcome, I think, um, just not to go through that administrative burden of deferring, which I'm okay, but not, maybe not in this scenario.
All right.
Can I just make one comment?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at the plan, the site plan, there's apps, I don't think there's any way they, um, the applicant could put in even a single drive there without at least impact, the tree would be impacted. So, it's, uh, and also forestry is put in condition number five, which to, um, refuses the application completely. So, we have to be careful how we word the forestry conditions if, if this is approved. I don't have a problem, but I'm, I'm, I still know that tree will be impacted even with a single, uh, lane, um, driveway? That's all. But again, let forestry and, I'm okay with letting forestry and the applicant work that out, but... out, but...
All right, let's have somebody make a motion and then we can move forward.
Can I ask for one clarification? The, the people that are talking about forestry and the applicant working things out means you have to add a forestry condition?
Yes.
The forestry condition that's recommended is five. That's denial. And one, so, but is that the only condition that you're thinking of attaching forestry one?
Can we have the forestry comments back up?
I think we should definitely add condition one.
Okay.
Condition five doesn't make sense if we're approving it, right?
Yeah, five is denial. That's my, my point. You can't say that you're approving it subject to...
Forestry did.
Conditions that, that forestry's recommended, which is to deny it.
Correct.
But they also put one in.
My clarification is, what, what would the condition be?
Can we, can we approve, uh, can we subject the approval to one condition?
Madam Chair, it's in the memo again, so if, we can throw it up if you want to see it.
Yeah, let's put the memo up. So forestry recommends it be subject to condition one, submission of a complete application for a permit to injure or remove a city-owned tree. So they are putting condition one on.
It's sort of contradictory.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
The memo is saying, first choice, refuse. If you approve it, they tell you which condition to attach.
So they're saying their first condition is five. So we don't make it subject to five because five is denial.
Correct.
They're saying if we see merit in the application, then we apply condition number one.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, some, we haven't had to...
You can't put, you can't put both on.
No, you can't put five.
But forestry has given you a direction on what to do depending on your choice.
All right. I think in this case, we should defer it and let them work it out with forestry.
You know what, Madam Chair? I'm of mind to, to do that as well now that I'm thinking about it. If that means, you know, that, and we're tinkering with things that perhaps we're, we're not the experts, um, we're here interpreting what, what is meant and what is being said on, on paper here to the best of our abilities. I mean, I don't want to take that risk. So if that means, I don't want to also unfairly, you know, make a decision that could impact on the applicant in, in an unfair manner if they haven't been given the fulsome ability to work this out then. I, and I would rather not approve something where forestry might be neglected in some way as well. So in this case then, based on all the discussion and what our Deputy Secretary General Treasurer has indicated, I want to call you a general now, you're so important, very important. Mr. Lamb, I, I, you know, I think that maybe I would be in favor of my colleagues on deferring this and letting them work it out, and at least they have the ability to come back with maybe a total different redesign, as opposed to denying and shutting it down or as opposed to approving it and making the wrong choices in how I would put something together for forestry.
All right, thank you. Fair enough. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would.
Mr. Swartz, you still have another comment?
Well, I don't know because we've been talking about deferring this and I'm, I'm not very comfortable with that either. What, what would be...
Well, they would, they would be able to have time to discuss it with forestry because they haven't. And let the arborist and the, and forestry see if there's any option with the current design. Otherwise, I mean, again, they have flexibility because they are also flanking Mona, so they could put a garage on Mona, but then they may have to redesign the whole house, in which case it might have different variances. So that would be the benefit of deferral, I think, is what our colleagues are suggesting.
I don't know. I would approve it, but go ahead.
All right. Does any, would anyone like to make a motion? Oh, Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant to work with forestry to, on preservation of the city-owned tree.
Seconder, Ms. Martin. All in favor of the motion to defer? That is four and all opposed? One, Mr. Swartz is opposed. All right, the application has been deferred. Okay, are we able to deal with item number nine? Because we're getting hungry. One more time with feeling. Hello?
Oh, wonderful.
Hello, Madam Chair. Hello?
Yes, hello. I'm just gonna read the preamble before you start.
Okay.
Because it's...
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great.
Okay, forty-two Sherwood Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing two-story dwelling to construct a two-story rear addition, third-floor partial addition, front box bay window, a rear basement walkout and a rear deck. The variances are for west-side yard setback to the proposed third-floor balcony and front balcony and west-side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, and a community planning report. All right, so, Mr. Locasano?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's Enzo Locasano from Arch D W G located in Toronto at one-two-four-five Paladonia Road.
Thank you. All right, let me just go back. We don't have anyone, any neighbors on this one? Any changes to the application at this point?
No, there is not. The only change would be the addition of a screen recommended by Community Council on the west side of the rear third-floor balcony.
Okay. Is this the one we wanted to clarify?
Yeah, I, could I, I have a question for the applicant. I, I don't underst, I'm not completely clear on the planning department's condition unless I've got the directions incorrect because they're not on the, on the elevation, or on the floor plans. If, if the screen's on the west side, doesn't that balcony kind of look at the wall of the building on the west side? And isn't the, the east side that's got a view out into the neighbor's yard? I, just questioning whether it's the right side.
Uh, no, it is, it is the west side. I think the east side is just further away. Again, realistically, because most of the houses there are two stories and that's the reason why we did push the third floor back, uh, almost twenty-four feet so that from the street, the house will look like a two-story unit.
Right.
But to be honest with you, I think the screening is more the look, looking down onto a roof rather than some, maybe they're worried about looking down into, through a window. But we're definitely not looking at the wall of the adjacent houses. We're, we're above the roof line there.
Yeah. Okay, and, and my other question had to do with, you've got a really substantial deck at the front of the building and there's no screening there, but I, I gather that it doesn't have overview, privacy issues at all, right?
No, there's none at all.
Okay, so if the condition from planning were to stand, it's, it is the west side then?
It is correct. It is the west side.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you for clarifying. I don't, we don't need a presentation, so we'll just take this into committee. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think this is a straightforward application and the, the applicant's clearly been working with, with the neighborhood on, on it. I don't see that there are any difficulties with it fitting into the community and as the applicant indicated, there's been some concern to push back the, the second floor so that it more comfortably addresses the existing context. So I frankly feel that the application's worthy of approval and I would move approval subject to the condition from the planning department.
All right. Do we have a seconder? Ms. Sankar? All in favor? That is unanimous. The application's been approved.
Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
You're welcome. All right, we're adjourned till two P M.